Mr. Carlo.
Here.
Mr. King, here. Mr. Conda, here. Mr. Molina.
Here.
Mr. Silverston.
Here.
Mr. Walter.
Here.
Approval of meeting minutes for September twenty-fourth, twenty thirteen.
Move to approve.
Second. Roll call on approval of minutes.
Mr. Carlo. Yes. Mr. King. I'm staying. Mr. Conda.
Yes.
Mr. Molina.
Yes.
Mr. Silverston. Got him. Mr. Walter.
I am staying. I haven't seen him yet.
Mayor Alonso will present his proclamation.
All right.
All right. Where's Robert? Where'd you go? Call me later.
Come on, come on.
It's your day. Your night. What side do you want him on? What's his best side for pictures?
Don't tell him to turn around.
First off, I think congratulating. You want to tell everybody? Well, everybody here probably knows you only got about two or three there in our scouts. Your, what your project was?
Yeah. My project was an addition to the outdoor chapel of my church in Solon. Pioneer Memorial Church.
Get plugged into the church, that's good.
And what was the addition?
Addition, well, it's called prayer labyrinth, so it's a little feature. We have about ten tons of rocks and we made a bunch of different paths that people can walk.
Yeah, very good. So tonight, we're here to present Robert with proclamation. I'm going to read it for him. Whereas Robert Charles Garrett, a junior at Twinsburg High School, is the son of Chris and Pamela Garrett. Robert has resided in the village of Reminderville since May nineteen ninety-two and is active in many school-sponsored activities. And whereas Robert joined the Scouts in two thousand four with Cub Scout Pack sixty-seven, after receiving the error of late March of two thousand eight, he crossed over to Boy Scouts in Troop Two Twenty-three. Robert has advanced the rank of Eagle Scout under the leadership of Scoutmaster Peter Dale. And whereas the Eagle Award is the highest honor conferred by the Boy Scouts of America, it represents the culmination of years of scouting work from a boy's earliest experience as a tenderfoot to the various ranks of second class, first class, star, and light. Achieving these ranks involved learning first aid and basic camping and survival skills, serving in leadership capacities, as well as earning merit badges in a variety of subjects. Eagles must earn at least twenty-one merit badges, including twelve in specific categories. An Eagle project, a major community service project, is required as well. And whereas Robert has earned a total of thirty-nine merit badges, twenty-one which are needed for earning the Eagle Award, Robert's project involved researching, funding, and creating a prayer labyrinth for the outdoor chapel behind the Pioneer Memorial Presbyterian Church in Solon, Ohio. With the help of his family, church members, friends, and fellow scouts, he coordinated, supervised, and constructed the installation of the rock labyrinth, which is available to anyone seeking a quiet outdoor setting designed for walking and reflecting while praying and meditating. Now, therefore, the mayor of Reminderville, the village of Reminderville, on behalf of the government and citizens of the village, extend this in serious congratulations to Robert Charles Garrett on occasion of his Eagle Court of Honor with Boy Scout Troop Two Two Three. And witness whereof I have, I have here on two set my hand and cause the seal of the village of Reminderville to be affixed heretofore the thirtieth day of July, twenty thirteen. There you go. Do you want to speak? There's your changeover. Your fifteen minutes, man, you can have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to all the scouts.
Okay, we'll go into records. Mayor.
I've got another letter to read here. This one is to the police department. Actually, it's to Officer Michael Burkeless. Dear Officer Burkeless, I wanted to express my gratitude to you and provide some follow-up on how this issue was resolved regarding an office and offense you cited me for last week. I was passing through Reminderville around six-thirty PM on May fifteenth, twenty thirteen, and was pulled over in the Drug Mart parking lot for falsification license plates. I had my young son in the car that evening and he was surprisingly calm with getting pulled over, something that surprised me. I'm certain of this because of the way you treated me during the stop. I wanted to comment to you on how you acted in a very professional manner and showed compassion and understanding for the serious offense. I am appreciative of this as well as your explanation of what issue was with my vehicle registration. As a follow-up, after the traffic stop, I pulled all the information about the vehicle purchase and registration. What occurred in the situation was the BMB sent a renewal letter for two vehicles, a two thousand five Black Malibu and a twenty-twelve silver Traverse for which I renewed the license plates in October twenty-twelve. The registration expired on thirteen. I received two sets of stickers and placed them on the cars without noticing the one for the Cobalt did not match the license plate on the car. The following morning, I presented the situation to the BMB and inquired about why I did not receive a third vehicle renewal letter. What they think happened is when I purchased and applied for new plates on the Cobalt, letters for license renewals without coming to January had already been sent out. They were very helpful and understood the circumstance leading to the error on my part. In light of this, they waived the late penalty, transferred some of the registration fee paid from the non-existent two thousand five Malibu license plate, and issued a new set of plates and stickers for the Cobalt. I appeared in my court appearance last week and presented all the information to the judge, who listened to the case, reviewed the documents, and ruled that an error did indeed occur in the situation. He reduced the charge to operating a vehicle with expired plates. The non-assessive fine for defense given and documentation provided. I was only responsible for covering court costs for the appearance. The purpose of this letter is to say thank you. I'm sure you've been often get letters from drivers who you issue a citation to, but I wanted to communicate my gratitude. I fully understand that this is serious offense and have not taken any of it lightly. Your understanding and compassion and treatment of both myself and son was excellent, and I think this should be acknowledged, and I'm grateful you provided me with the opportunity to correct this error without arrest and towing my car. I do not know if there's a formal system to provide feedback for law enforcement officers in Reminderville, so I drafted this letter and provided a copy to your chief as well. Thanks again for the way you managed the situation with gratitude. Donald Bolts, Windsor Way, let's provide. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, everybody, it's a chance to move up front. That's all I got.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Carpenter?
I don't have anything to report on, however, this thing just kind of reminded me of the one scene in Animal House when they had the, the judicial, the semi-judicial hearing and they all got up and laughed. That was filed out. Pretty common to me.
Just there, yes, sir.
On the agenda today is Resolution Fifty-eight, which gives us the ability to go to Bonny now and get the plaques prepared for Willowbrook, Private Streets, Pirates Cove. We watched it with the engineer, the punch list. We contacted him repeatedly in the last couple of weeks. He's not responding. You have official letter and give him one week to respond or we're going after his bonding company. Maryland Waterline is, is complete. Roadway is complete. They're working on cleaning up the drainage. It has been requested that some of the ditching be eliminated, so we are evaluating and getting costs to eliminate some additional ditching. Harrington Six, all I can tell you is we did get a response on the drainage on four and five. We didn't go through it. We did mark it up and send it back. We did a, get a response today, which we're evaluating. But we would hope that five is good now and that they won't do that installation. But six, right now, the curbs are in, but they haven't played the asphalt and I don't know if I would move on that at all.
I was going to ask you why they pulled out. Curbs have been ready for just a week, it seems like.
Yeah, I don't know, but they are looking to pay the surface course on four and five, so which would be good. Nautilus Trail, it's looking like beginning of November or so, we're going to start doing the water line. I think we're going to start on the eastern end and come down to the, the bridge. We, we did, we have a small section from Clipper Over that we're going to probably add to the job so that we don't, might as well get it done now before the next phase, so. But that'll begin in November.
Is it all on one side or do they have to cross it all anywhere?
It is all on one side.
That's good.
It's on the fire right inside, right?
Right, right. There, it comes through the woods there, if you know, comes off California, you know, it goes down through the woods. We pick it up there and run it all the way over to Clipper. We'll be in repair. But we were ending on the east side of that Clipper there.
Right.
After evaluating it, we feel that we'd like to get across the street over to the Culver side and get that complete. Now, we do, we did have the next phase of Nautilus approved, which is from there all the way to Glenwood, and we will be looking to try to put the same program together and replace the water line, the street, and everything in a couple of years. So that's what we're at right now.
Just so everybody knows, Gene and Sam have been putting together like a, kind of retool it every so often of what roads that we're going to look at doing as the years progress. And the only thing changing is the opportunities we get whenever we have a chance to do a water line and we can do a road at the same time, kind of skips ahead. But if you look through the village, almost all the way to snuff everything, huh? We've got to do California Street.
Right.
Maybe some stuff on east, talk about. And everything else is in good shape. Great job, Gene.
Thank you, Chief. Did you, do you know if Sam got any response on the lamppost that's down at Inkeridge and Nautilus?
No, he did not, he did not give me a report of it, sorry.
All right.
I'll check on it.
Thank you. Deborah's not here tonight, as everyone's probably aware, with this couple of things she wanted me to go over. First off, her and Perry both got their laptops. Thank you, Chief. And we're going to be in receipt of inheritance estate tax of, it'll be approximately eighty thousand dollars, which will be coming in sometime, probably first of the year. This is important.
Do you know how we hear about that, that we're going to get?
They descend it to us themselves.
Who's, who's they, Rita or?
I don't think it comes from the county.
That's a county, you think?
I think it came from the state.
Maybe it does, but the county, they get the records from the county.
Okay. I was just curious.
Yeah, it's a special form of evidence. Tells you how much the gross amount was and how much, and how much you're going to get.
Chief.
Yes.
You're up.
The Halloween party rolling on is scheduled. Everything's good. The flyers are ready to go out. The after-party, the clam bake, will be coming around during the break. Hope everybody brought the checkbooks. Love to have you all there. Your help in the Humane Society, we appreciate it. The...
Twenty-sixth, right?
Twenty-sixth, right, five PM, right after the Halloween party. The Humane Society will be here with their animals to adopt, both for the Halloween party and for the clam bake. The only other thing was, you want to go over that letter or do you want me to summarize?
You can summarize.
I received a letter yesterday from the chief in Twinsburg saying they're going to go to eight hundred megahertz before the end of the year. Also in the letter, he references staying with, keeping the, we're on four hundred, keeping the four hundred system operational. Basically, the letter says, "We don't have to go to eight hundred if we don't want to." There's issues with that. There's logistical issues in that the, the way it works now, Twinsburg hears us, we hear them, we back them up, they back us up. Priority called, we're rolling that way. If they're dispatched on two different frequencies and we don't have the ability to receive one of them, we won't know if they're at a shooting at the circle at Liberty and Glenwood, because we won't be able to hear them. So I don't know, I don't know how wild I am about doing that. Additionally, I've talked with the mayor. There is serious talk that the city of Twinsburg is going to disband their dispatch center and go to Solon. I don't know how true that is, but I know they're talking with the city of Solon. If they do that, Solon is four hundred megahertz, so we would go back to four hundred. So spending sixty-two thousand dollars on radio equipment doesn't seem like a fiscally responsible use of taxpayer dollar if they're going to go to Solon in two thousand and fourteen.
But is this something the chief's doing to maybe discourage going to Solon?
I don't know that. I've got three calls in to him. He's not called me back yet. I'll let you know when he does.
Because, I mean, he's got to be aware of the talks and that they're four hundred. I know, it's just something's going on.
Maybe they're not four hundred anymore, but the last time I talked to him, they weren't.
Was this part of the federal changeover? This is just their, what?
They just decided to go, they just decided to go to eight hundred. I have no idea what the, what the decision was based on.
Well, if we find out that Solon's on four hundred, why don't we just get into talks and have them do our dispatch and say, "See you at one more." I don't know what that entails.
They entail about another seventy thousand dollars a year.
Yeah.
Okay. But if that answer that, but we could end up being there anyways, right?
We absolutely could.
They say before it's all over, there's only going to be like five dispatch centers, and that's stayed awhile.
They've been saying that my whole career, though.
It's coming.
I mean, they...
Revenda's got like thirteen or fourteen right now.
Why, Chief Puck, are they considering switching to eight hundred after they put all that money into the Cleveland Dispatch Center?
They did, they did not do that.
They didn't, but...
They're not going to, they're staying, currently, in my understanding, they're staying in the building they're in, that they discarded the plan to go to the clam.
They were going to go to the clinic if there was enough of us interested. There's a lot of them that backed out, like Matzadonia backed out, different other communities have backed out. Now they're all chasing, trying to find places to come. Twinsburg's been treating us rather well, and hopefully Solon can treat us well.
Certainly, we do everything we can to cooperate, but we'll be spending money if we're going to just reverse it.
Right, yes, we're out to it. So as soon as I talk with the chief, I'll, I'll find more out, but my recommendation would be, if Twinsburg City is going to be on eight hundred, we need to be on eight hundred for the safety of our officers. Certainly, certainly somebody at Twinsburg had to think, if we go to Solon, why are we going to spend money on eight hundred radios? So there's got to be a logical answer that I'm not aware of.
Maybe it's so they don't have to go to Solon.
Wow, that's, my understanding is that's the police chief wishes. They moved their jail there and they want to move their dispatch center there. Well, I don't know. When I find out from the chief, I will relay it to Gomis.
Is there an issue with the fact that Solon's, Iowa County versus Twinsburg Summit County as far as jail holding them and things like that?
It's not logistically the best thing. I know we have, we have paperwork nightmares because the counties use different paperwork for trial versus summit, but they seem to be working through it. Solon's jail's treating us pretty well, so.
Okay. I just...
Supposed to be really nice jails.
Very nice jail.
From what I, from what I hear, yeah, city, city Cleveland councilman spends time there sometimes.
Yeah, that's why they said it was a plush jail to go to for him.
It's a nice place. That's all I have.
It's much better than District.
What's the, for clam bake, when do you need to know, when ideally? The drop-dead date is, I think, the sixteenth or eighteenth, somewhere in there.
How much is each of them?
It's twenty-five dollars a ticket. Ten dollars extra if you want an extra dozen clams. That includes a half chicken, sweet potato, corn on the cob, clam chowder, dozen clams, bread, and soft drink.
Who do we make the check out to?
The Reminderville Police Department. I have tickets with me. Issue one, some.
I'll get my checklist with you.
That's wonderful. That's all I have.
Hey. What's that about?
What?
I didn't say anything.
He's vibing.
I hear that.
Thanks, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Barry, Chief, is not here. Do we have a report? He's at the... Yeah. No, it's meet the candidate. Meet the candidate.
Every time I see Sabre.
All of them. No report. Architectural Board Review.
Architectural Board Review will meet at seven o'clock here at Village Hall on Monday, the twenty-eighth, October.
Thanks, Mark. Planning and zoning? No reports. Board of Zoning Appeals?
We have a meeting on Thursday, October seventeenth at six-thirty.
Thank you, Joe. Finance?
Finance, but today at six o'clock, or six-thirty, actually. We recommended payments in the amount of one hundred seventy-two thousand, five hundred seventeen dollars and twelve cents. Our next meeting will be before our next council meeting at six-thirty, whatever date that is. Twenty-sixth, twenty, no, seventeenth? Twenty-second.
He asked me different, he asked me...
Fourteen plus eight, twenty-two. Thank you, Chief.
Eight plus fourteen. I have no report, but I will say this, they either missed the meeting or it's Thursday.
Communicate while you're out.
Couple of roadblock things. One, I don't know if any of you have seen this, but Mr. Barfman worked on getting this. We need a garden sign to go in between the top two rails, somewhere out there. I guess, I don't know, say maybe you can have our service department put it up.
That's bigger than the blind people crossing.
So Lee did a nice piece of plastic. It was forty-three dollars, so it was not too much and at least people will know what they're, were driving by. Also, I don't know if you noticed in the back there, we have, we purchased the tote bags, which are reusable bags that we plan on giving out to, to new residents, new resident kit, as we like to call it. Our next thing that we're going to do is obviously be putting things in those new resident kits. So again, I would throw this out to the group, the Communications Committee, and we had a list of about fifty different things around here that we were going to go and divide and conquer and see if they have, whether it's coupons or what have you, just information about restaurants and things like that. So if there's anything you all can help out with, we would greatly appreciate that. The next thing is to, to stuff those and take them to the residents.
How many are you preparing for?
We, we bought, we purchased two hundred fifty tote bags.
So two hundred fifty items of something like...
Uh, no, well, not necessarily. I mean, we could do fifty at a time, you know. We would, yeah. We'll see how it goes. Obviously, we can build forty or fifty new homes and obviously the resells, the resale homes as well. So we'll see. I don't think we're going to go through two hundred fifty that quick.
Halloween, Charlie.
Thank you, Mark. Long-term community development?
Lee's not here.
Recreation?
Recreation. The chief already mentioned Halloween. Our next meeting will be Wednesday, the sixteenth, in this room at seven o'clock, where the main topic of discussion will be a tree lighting ceremony. The ladies are hoping to start a new tradition, probably the first Saturday after Thanksgiving. That date is not in concrete yet, where we have an event up at the plaza, which peaks with the lighting of the roundabout. As you remember, we had a less than stellar lighting situation there last year. We're kind of hoping to turn a weak point into a strong point and possibly start another tradition of community evening. They were talking about maybe choirs and hot chocolate and wagon rides. I was going to ask the chief about that. He's, we volunteered him to bring his horse up there. I even hear they got some guy to play Santa Claus that way, so. If you want to get involved and give your two cents worth, come on up to the meeting on the sixteenth. That's it.
Hey, Mark, in tying in with that, I brought this up last year, but it was kind of late in season. But Running Lights Out For Hunger raises a community and it has a government body we sponsor one night where we ask the residents to turn off the Christmas lights and make a donation to the local food bank or whatever we decide would be good. Is that something as a council would be interested in doing?
The ladies are going full go on the food drive, and if we did it, it's kind of a combination with that.
And, and all we're doing is asking people to turn off their lights, and we pick the date. And, you know, what they save in electricity by not burning their lights, we ask for that.
Can my kids turn off their TVs?
Yeah, turn off the laptop or something. But it, it would be good to tie in and push it off the night of the lighting and...
I'll bring it up at the meeting.
Okay.
On the food drive, where you put a sign on the boxes this year, please only have me approve that they have expiration dates.
Yeah, we're also thinking of recommending there are certain staples that are best, or, you know, like peanut butter or things like that.
Does people use it as a dumping point for stuff that's out of export, out of, you know, any...
Yeah, we can put a sign by the buckets that say, "Please check expiration date."
Cool, then. You got to really get that to have some paid fees.
Thanks, Mark. Records. Seniors?
Seniors, Al, how'd lunch go today?
Very good. Very good lunch.
That was at the cafe in Stone. Our next big event is the spaghetti dinner, which will be, if I can read my own writing, twenty-first, next Monday. It's at six o'clock, and the chief is asking...
One week from Monday.
One week from Monday, just so you're aware of something. The chief asks that you register with the city hall first so they can have a good head count for that night. And I wanted to say, Lee's not here, but the photo we put in the E-Flash, it looked like it was an elegant ballroom because the floor looked like red carpet. Did you see the picture of the last year's spaghetti dinner? Check it out. It really looks nice. And our next breakfast, ten o'clock on the thirteenth, at First Watch in Solon. Thank you.
Thank you. And, yeah, no report. Cable Legislation, Resolution Thirty-seven, twenty thirteen. The resolution to accept the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission to approve the final flat for Phase Six of the Harrington Place subdivision, second reading. Okay, legislation ordinance twenty-six, twenty thirteen, and emergency ordinance to make appropriation adjustments for the twenty thirteen budget and declaring emergency. Resolution forty-nine, twenty thirteen, an amended and restated resolution of the Council of the Village of Reminderville, Summit County, Ohio, third reading. Resolution fifty-one, twenty thirteen, a resolution to limit blanket purchase orders to amounts not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars, third reading. Resolution fifty-six, twenty thirteen, a resolution to authorize the fiscal officer to reimburse Chief Jeffrey Buck in the amount of one thousand nine hundred and twelve dollars and five cents, second reading. Resolution fifty-seven, twenty thirteen, a resolution to support the passage of a six-point-nine mil renewal levy submitted to the voters by the Twinsburg City School District on the November fifth, twenty thirteen, general election ballot, first reading. We do need to pass this by emergency, and the reason this is on, last meeting, Walt Hoffman came in and said he wasn't looking for any kind of formal endorsement. But after he said that, when Twinsburg Council asked why, excuse me, why they weren't endorsing it to some of the council members that are, do have terms up this year, wanted to endorse it. So Twinsburg went ahead and did a rep... So, Twinsburg went ahead and did a motion, the township did it, and here we were sitting without doing it. So, we decided to do a resolution and make it even more efficient. Resolution fifty-eight, twenty thirteen, a resolution to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement with Donald G. Boning and Associates, Inc. for the dedication plating of private streets within the Willowbrook subdivision and declaring an emergency. Old business.
How's everybody liking their laptops, getting used to them?
Yep.
How's my old business?
Any other old business, new business? Go, go on.
Are we gonna get cases today, Steve?
Yeah, Stacy was supposed to look into getting some kind of, just a little, you know, executive.
Okay, something that carries that through my hours, so.
Sam, was the Royal Shorts Engineering able to get on the property, do you not? For Harrington?
There's still bones back before those. He can have anything he wants that we have here. I'm waiting on Joe's stock again.
New business? Post new adjournment? Roll call adjournment.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ponder?
Yes.
Mr. Molina?
Yes.
Silverstein?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes. American Town.
Yes.
Well, we have a card you called me, and I have in the back of the car a bunch of sign wires, if anybody wants them, for election signs. Because you gotta pay for those separate.
Yes.
So, they're in the back of my car. If anybody wants them, just have them go in and don't...
I've got plenty of them. Sit in it. What are you putting aside? What's that? You guys aren't putting aside?
Ah, I've probably put a couple, but we don't really have to. But no, I got plenty of them, chair.
I'm putting one up in your yard and one in here, right? Because I have one for Jesus of my yard.
Bring it home, bring it to you, I'll put one in the back. You didn't even budge. You didn't even budge. I'll sit here looking at you like, "There you go." Are you stupid?